I had my camera on for.
You did?
I don't usually do that. No, they they blocked out because it didn't start.
Hello Nancy.
Hello Mark. Hello Lilly.
You're a muted man chair.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone had not too many minutes from our last meeting. That was held on the tenth mark over. Yes. Any edits? Um there's just one edit that was not here even though you know my spirit is always here.
Oh that's.
I was removed.
Other than the X. Do we have any changes?
No.
No. Can I have a motion to approve sentiments with that correct?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting ten ten twenty three. So I'm saying. Oh I need a second I'll go back to the. I'll favor.
So the vote nine chairs three zero one.
Yeah. So moving on to the adoption of visitors. Do we have any visitors?
Yes, nine chair. We have a couple visitors tonight. We have Ms. Nancy Cagiano, our preschool teacher. And we also have Mr. Scott Bullock, our music teacher and band director.
How are you going? Okay, so moving on to correspondence and community input. Has anyone received any correspondence?
I have not. I've seen. Oh but I thought was a very thoughtful consideration. In community. And what it was was. This particular person said. You know. My he was speaking about himself. And he said myself and I would imagine some others in the community who are older, retired. You know, don't have a lot going on. He said. If you wanted and or needed. I would volunteer and I think I could get others to volunteer to just. Sit in the parking lot and survey the school. Oh. Like like meaning extra protection for our children. Honestly for it was sweet, but it was actually I thought a very good idea. Like he said, I don't have a lot going on. I think multiple people would be interested a couple hours, however it works, whenever you meet us. We could be an extra layer of. Eyes watching and I just thought that was so sweet and also very thoughtful and so I wanted to share.
If you're comfortable giving uh the administration that individuals name privately, you'll contact.
Absolutely.
For her.
Yes.
And uh because we're always looking for volunteers.
It was a very thoughtful. Very thoughtful.
Great yeah.
Statement.
Yeah.
So okay, yes, I I will I will.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's all. You okay? Okay. Free on prize. Connect. I don't know. Um I did not. And. Is anyone out there in the community? Like say.
And well, I've just received information from Ms. Cagiano that the sound is good. I was just double checking.
To protect my voice louder.
No, she said it's good.
Okay, so moving on to the superintendent's report. Oh number five. Yes, moving on to the examination and authorization of the income bill. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Later in this uh on this article, I will ask the member of this committee respectfully as the member of this school committee. To make a motion to approve fifty four thousand five hundred forty one dollars and fourteen cents. To pay all of the invoices that you have signed. And I'll go over them very quickly. There's six of them for school lunch costs. Uh several spent tuition's. Copier costs. Uh we have a ten dollar and fifteen cent bill for our street light. The Verizon bill is for two alarms are um. An elevator alarm and our fire alarm. That's the direct copper lines. We're uh. One of the few places left in uh Nahat that actually has copper. Uh and as I. As I was told about four weeks ago when the box outside was the lock was broken and. Certain individuals youthful individuals were inside the box. I was worried because. I figured, you know, somebody would go in, grab a handful of wires and pull it. The workman when he called me said there's only four wires in that whole thing to work and and they're all yours. So you would know right away. There are three bills to individuals for private special education transportation. We always make the uh overture to a parent guardian or family. That when we have an hour of district placement, if they're interested in transporting their child themselves. Rather than the child riding a um. A van or a special education bus. And three of our families have taken us up on that. It's uh it's easier on the children. To be with their families doing that trans- transportation. And uh. You know, it's it's time spent with a family member instead of with someone you don't know. So we we always make that overture. There's a three hundred dollar bill for the removal of our grand piano, which we tried to get someone to take. We had we surplused it. We put it on the state system. No one was interested. We were told by the piano tuner that it was uh irrecoverable. Uh the um. The iron pieces, uh the soundboard. Were all stripped, so. It couldn't be used, so we did pay three hundred dollars to have it taken away. The chair. The finance director. And Mark Healy have agreed to an amendment to our contract, which I believe you're all aware of because he sent you the paperwork. So the chair signed that document. And in today on today's bill roll is the two thousand four hundred sixty four dollars. For the late buses, which are later and align with the times of the Swan Scott Middle School and High School dismissal. And that's the annual cost. That's not going to be a recurring one. I already have all the invoices for the year for Mark. And Mark and I decided rather than have to regenerate. The monthly invoices for the entire year, we would just pay the bill. Which makes a lot of sense for everybody. So that's for Kristen and me and you. The anonymous alerts you may that may have tweaked you. That's the the smart button. That's the emergency button that we all have on our uh phones. And uh. One kind of interesting story because most of tonight won't be interesting at all with policies. When the uh NEMLEC team came and walked through the building. And gave me some suggestions, which I will mention under facilities. They also gave in the name of the uh facilities director. Of the Epstein. Uh Jewish day school in Marburg.
Hello.
And um I had a wonderful conversation with him. And what we found out was we are doing very similar things. Um and that um. We are in really good shape for public school. I mean, we have certain things we're going to improve over the course of the year, but um. And one of the things he didn't know about was the smart button system, so I sent him information. He was intrigued by it and I believe they're gonna. They're gonna put it on their phones. Because they have the same issue that we had when I came here. As long as you're someplace. Set. You can do an emergency call, but if you're on a field trip and something happens, or if you're out on the playground, or if you're. Taking a a nature walk of you know to to the beach. And something happens, you know, it's it's uh. It's more difficult to contact the right people. Now, since we have had the smart button. Uh I look back and I signed the. Contract, the original contract in two thousand seventeen. Nine one one on your cell phone has improved. It used to be it went to a regional center. And then it came back to the locals. Now they have a much more sophisticated system.
Local I learned that by accident.
Yeah.
I accidentally called nine one one.
Yeah.
And not PlayStation.
Yeah. So it's just a backup system. I mean, it's if something dramatic is going on, we want everybody to know right away at the same time. And just to remind you, the smart button system works and. Uh we we load it with the cell phone numbers of our staff, all the police officers, the town manager. All the people that would um. Uh Mr. Taylor, the the APW director, all the people that have to have something to do with a response. Of any kind of in an emergency and simply by pushing the button. Or by going to the subset that has a definition, for example, an intruder or.
Medical or.
Uh gas leak.
Yeah.
Medical or you can push that and then everybody gets the same message. Really within I'd say five to ten seconds.
And you were saying that the system that we have would work if they were like on campus.
Yes.
Whereas if we had like a different system, it would be more difficult.
Yeah, when I came here, they had a system that was connected to the laptop.
Right.
Uh excuse me, to the desktop computers, which was fine when you were in school.
Yeah, right, okay.
And um. And that's why we switch. So that's all of them. Um oh. Let me. Finish my concept. The the anonymous alert charge is an annual charge, just once a year. So eleven hundred fifty five dollars. Um and that's about it.
You want me to make a motion?
Please go.
Can I make I'd like to make a motion to approve uh billing for today's meeting ten twenty three twenty three for the amount of fifty four thousand five forty one and fourteen cents. That's second, I'll second. I'll favor. Now we can move on to number six.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh the first item number six A is the uh on my calendar. Is the uh first discussion of the. Next year's budget, which is the fiscal twenty five budget. This will be very, very brief brief. Other than uncontrollable costs like. Individual education plan costs. That um. The administration or the school committee has no no control over. Uh the costs will be in um in the same realm, the same percentage. As this last budget increased. Um in the three percent range, I would imagine. I'm going to be. A little bit more careful. With this budget to make sure. That I recommend a budget that will. Enable the next superintendent to have some leeway, to have some room. In case he or she has uh thoughts that they are bringing in from the outside like I did. That and you know, the budget's too tight and you have financial restrictions. Rather than philosophic or conceptual ones. So I'm gonna try to put a little bit of money in the fiscal twenty five budget for that. Other than that, there should be no uh no big change. I have no revenue numbers from the state, although I am told. That um the revenue should be adequate. I don't think the state revenue is going to be as healthy as it was in fiscal twenty four. The capital gains in fiscal twenty four was significant. The biggest change, I think. In percentage. Is the excise taxes. The cost of automobiles has escalated so dramatically. And so high. That the the excise tax. Um revenue is dramatically higher every year. I'm sure you know from your own our unpersonalized. Uh you pay an excise tax on the. The value of the car. It decreases ten percent for the first five years and then it's frozen. So when cars were two thousand dollars. Uh excuse me, twenty thousand dollars. You know, the the excise tax would go from twenty to eighteen down to ten thousand and then as long as you own the car. You would pay the excise tax on it ten thousand dollars. Well, there are no twenty thousand dollar cars anymore. I mean, a basic. Compact car is about thirty two to thirty six now. Um and obviously, we all know electric, you know, the electric vehicles, although there is a tax break. When you buy it, your excise tax is still high. So that's been been higher. One of the hopes is that the um. Awful things that are happening in the Middle East will. Calm down a little bit and and in uh. In other places. And that the. Things will bounce. The economy will bounce a little bit in terms of. The stock market and you know portfolio investments. Because when people sell. At a gain, the state obviously gets the capital gains. And right now, when people are selling stocks, it's at a loss and so. They get an income tax break, but the state doesn't get anything. So uh. But I have no information about revenue. I do know that the last. Information I saw from the state. Was that the cola. To keep up with inflation would be over four percent. It was four two. And I'll keep my eye on that. Because that will obviously be determined. We do have contracts with everyone. So uh we know where our call our big costs are going to be. Uh we have a contract with Swan Scott, obviously. Uh for our seventh through twelfth graders next year or whatever grade. You decide to send there. And we have both bus companies have contracts. And uh there will be no increase in the regular education Swan Scott. And, uh, there will be no increase in the regular education Swanscott bus contract. This is the last year of the original three-year contract. So in fiscal twenty-five and twenty-six, there's no cost increase. If you remember, I negotiated that it would go up for the first three years and then it would freeze for two, which is very good. Um, and we have contracts with our union employees in place. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
And obviously I will bring, bring that to you as always. Uh, fine tuning it as we go. Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to defer to the principal for his report, which is item sixty in your package.
Thank you, Mr. Parentozzi, Madam Chair. I'm happy to write my report tonight. Uh, I'll start off with update on students, families in the community. Uh, we had our student council elections recently with, uh, Zavi Uskatsky taking the lead as our new student council president. They had their first meeting today and I look forward to working with them. Uh, Tommy Camaro is the secretary, oh, no, is the treasurer. And he was, uh, reporting the idea of offering, uh, soccer nets for the school grounds. And several students actually mentioned this. And I think it's a great idea. I think it'll reduce conflict during recess because the students have a, a rule where they determined whether or not it was a goal by whether or not they could have jumped and stopped it at the hand. And so the, yeah, so depending on who was, who was guarding and and I've had so many students come up to me and said, that was a great idea. So I'm looking forward to using our student activity funds and supporting, uh, the idea, um, of these, uh, student council representatives who often bring a wonderful ideas to us that are really, uh, you know, pragmatic. And I think that'll, I think that'll help us. And they're also looking to have lines, corners, uh, so we'll see how far we go with it. Um, but I'm glad to say that, um, soccer's really taken off at recess. And, you know, it's an on-contact sport, generally speaking. And, um, the students, yeah, less so than football, we'll say. And, and so we've, uh, preferred that and it's worked out well. Uh, so congratulations to all the students. And, um, I've really emphasized that we'll work with all the students in the school, uh, as members of the council at large, uh, to help us with ideas that they've had. So if, even if they didn't win office, their ideas are welcome and as is their participation. Uh, we'll have the, uh, we'll have the director of the Nahyan Historical Society visiting the fourth and fifth graders this week. Um, Ms. Julie Tarmy brings a collection of work from an eighth grader from the ancient hundreds that really demonstrates how hard students can really work and focus and produce something really nice. And so she'll be visiting, typically she would visit with the sixth graders, but we've changed it up this year and have had the fourth and fifth graders together to share that work and look at what you can really do if you focus. Uh, so that's, that's welcome this week. And last week, we had our Northeastern University trip. Uh, typically we'll rent small, we'll have small vans for that, but we rented a bus. It worked out just nicely. The K to five students each had an opportunity to go up to the labs, go to the tide pools. And we had a lap, we had a bus here for the day, uh, lapping, um, at the school. And it costs around five hundred for the students, which is really reasonable for the experience they had. It was a great experience. Everything worked out smoothly. Uh, a little bit of logistics involved with getting everybody up and back for the important experience. But, uh, I think it was well spent. And we're looking forward to two or three more experiences per grade. So we're, we're back in the full Northeastern University experience that we had pre-COVID.
Great.
Even ramping up since then, so it's, it's back to full. Uh, this week we'll also have, uh, Mr. Michael Afassi from, uh, Origamido Studio. He studied under one of the most well-known origami artists in the world. And origami, I didn't know until the seventies, was mostly about abstract folded paper. And then in the seventies, it started into making frogs and then making butterflies. And then it actually took off. And so through him and actually, uh, through his mentor, uh, he's developed a real nice art form. And so he'll bring, be bringing that to the school, uh, on, uh, Thursday. And he'll connect it with math and the focus will be on marine science animals. Uh, I had on my document that I shared with you that this Saturday, the Halloween event rescheduled. It's actually Sunday.
Sunday.
Yeah, so I corrected that, um, but it is October twenty-ninth. And so we'll have the PTO doing trunk or treat. And also some evening events, um, that should be really fun for the students that are looking forward to this great tradition. I want to thank, uh, the PTO, uh, for putting this together, especially Mr. James Lloyd, the president, who coordinates this with the many volunteers that make it possible. And I know the students are quite looking forward to it. I was in kindergarten today and they have a Halloween countdown. So it's a big holiday for the kids and it's nice that the PTO comes together. And also on the twenty-sixth, the preschool's gonna visit the fire department. And on the twenty-seventh, the preschool's gonna have, um, Mr. Cullen and come to the preschool to do some clay work. He's actually gonna do a multi-visit, uh, visit to the preschool where they mold something. Then he's going to go fire it and bring it back to them. Uh, so preschool isn't going to be doing origami because they don't know how to fold yet.
Yeah.
Um, and our school is unique because we have three to twelve-year-olds. They're all different and we don't want to do the same thing for everybody. And I was glad that Ms. Pass from Sacciano will be able to put this together with, uh, Mr. Mark Cullinan, uh, who is actually as well in the selectmen, also an artist. And, uh, grandparent to several of the preschoolers. So it'll be nice to see him here, uh, through a multi-visit experience. In the area of technology, uh, Parents Square is ramping up. It's actually live.
Yeah.
So you may have, yeah, right?
I'm using.
Right.
It's great.
Great, great. Yeah, everyone's welcome to register now. Um, I guess you could say it's a soft roll out. We have all the data is good, so it's fully tied in with our student database. So parents are welcome to register. Um, I haven't blasted that out yet because the technology got ahead of the people, uh, and sometimes will happen. And, uh, it, it's all good. I've already registered and been using it. Um, and what Parents Square has said that teachers and parents often don't need training on it. Uh, it's very straightforward and simple, which is one of the great reasons that we adopted it. So teachers are registering. We're having a formal training tomorrow afternoon during our, uh, parent, during our teacher training and staff meeting. It was scheduled for November first. I doubt the fact that it's tomorrow so that we could really move forward with it. Uh, and again, as I said, I've already been using it. Basically, if you don't register, it'll just come across to you as an email. Um, if you do register, you can say, oh, I want that as a text, or I want that as a, whatever the version is that you want. So the default is going to be an email. You'll already get the email. You don't have to do anything to get the information. But if you'd like to get it as an alert, uh, you can do that. And I can still push it through as an alert and override the parent's settings. So as a parent, you can say, I don't want it as an alert. Uh, I'd rather just have my email dig, digest once a day at six P M. However, if I have something urgent that I want to send out that says, you know, we're doing a special food drive tomorrow, please come in with your cans, I could send it as an alert. And it would override your settings as an email and you'd get it as a text anyway. So it's a kind of a give and take in terms of how you want to get the message. Um, and I'll be encouraging parents to register and, and sending videos about how to, you know, tie in the way that you'd like to do that. Are there questions about that right now?
No, I, I accidentally did it. Like I actually was trying to.
That's how easy it is.
I actually was trying to look at my son's.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But I noticed that it was already there for my daughter and so I just signed up. It was so easy. And I did get an email and it was great.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kevin's been working with the technology director from Swanscott, so they're coordinated and linked.
Yes, which is helpful because I can see both kids on the, like, on my, from my phone, I can see the kids on the left. So anyway, it was sort of accidental, but it's been great from what I can tell.
Great. Nice to hear it and good feedback.
Yeah.
Please feel free to give the feedback as we go. In the area of curriculum instruction and professional development, uh, we did launch our first Dibbles and I-ready assessments. This is the state mandated, uh, reading assessments that we do. We, this year, the state's asking all schools to do twice a year reading assessments and then share the results with parents. Uh, so we did basically a, a practice run right now. We just finished that up and our two official ones will be just before our trimester one report card and our trimester two report cards. And so right around the time of the first report card comes out, we'll be doing the I-ready assessment again. Kindergarten's using Dibbles because we feel it's a little bit more developmentally appropriate. Um, and it's actually more recognized by the state as being compliant with what they're looking for. So there, those folks are trying that out. Uh, but the whole school's also doing I-ready. And parents will have an opportunity to meet with their teacher and discuss that during parent-teacher conferences. So the state's requesting that we meet with all parents who have a student that is below grade level. Uh, and we'll meet with them twice a year. But we're going to tie it in with our parent-teacher conferences and that'll make it seamless. And it's a logical time to do that. Uh, I was able to have a, a wonderful talk with, um, Ms. Anna Brandy, uh, empowering students to change their landscape. That was that last week that I mentioned to you. We had twenty-five people online to learn about how they were interested in learning how they could start working with students to do the type of work that we're doing at school. And it was well received. And we're planning on having monthly, uh, talks. Um, it's not exactly, it, it is tied into the school, um, but it's a little bit outside of the school, but I thought I would share it with you as well. Future topics include, um, vegetables to plant with children and science in the gardens and, and other topics about how folks can use, you know, natural landscape to encourage students to care about their world and also change it for the, for the better. Uh, November first is our professional development day, as always, the day after Halloween.
So.
Nice day for, you know, the students to be off. Hopefully parents can work that out with their families. And, uh, we'll have professional development at the school. We're gonna focus on Collins writing. We're revising the report cards with new standards that are updated. And I'll also be working with our special education director about, uh, de-escalation and behavioral techniques. Mostly around language and how you can speak to students to get them to do what you know.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I'll look into it soon. I, you know, it's, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a certain thing. Don't, one thing I would say is, don't ask them, tell them. You know, tell them with as few words as you can. Would you put that away? Put that away. Please, and, and please, yeah, you throw a please in there.
A related topic of, one, one of the other hats I wear is the president of the Board of Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth, which is a professional development organization. And we are signing a contract with a Connecticut parent perfect development organization. And, uh, so M P Y will have a link to, uh, with, to twenty-four short presentations for parents on all kinds of parenting topics.
Oh, that's great.
So as soon as they, your contract hasn't been signed yet, uh, as soon as it is, I'll tell everybody about it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
And related to that, uh, M P Y will be coming up to the school on, I believe it's November fourteenth. I think we have another school committee meeting before that, that's my, my list. But they'll be coming to, uh, work with us on bully prevention.
Great.
And then they're going to be back in January to work with the staff. So we do have a couple of workshops lined up with them and they're, they're great folks. And really, uh, again, another pragmatic opportunity for us to find out, you know, how to be our best selves as educators.
Yeah, and one of the best things that, uh, M P Y accidentally fell into because of COVID nineteen is the lack of the need to be physically present for a presentation of importance. Uh, the way it works is now, the, the vast percentage of the presentations and the trainings are, uh, via technology, uh, via Zoom. And the, um, M P Y gives, uh, professional development points, which we all need, uh, to get our recertification. And if you are a mental health worker, like a social worker or a psychiatrist, psychologist, you need CEUs to keep your license. And the way we have organized it in M P Y, let's say there's a ten o'clock in the morning to eleven o'clock in the morning on a particular date presentation. Um, you don't have to go. Anytime within seventy-two hours of that presentation, if you log on and watch it, you get full credit. So people are doing it on their own, you know, on their own time, which in terms of, um, Mr. Andrew's job of finding substitute teachers is a blessing.
And if I can add, you also have access to much better presenters than you would because you, we had some from New York last year, last year.
Yeah.
It was just fantastic. And they wouldn't have come out for fourteen staff members.
Right.
Um, and so that was, that was great. And, and so you do get, you know, you get more opportunities, I think, with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and even for a big district, there are certain jobs that, there'll only have a couple of them. You know, it's not like elementary teaching where in, you know, in a five thousand pupil school district, you have thirty of them in each grade. But there are only a certain amount of psychologists, there's social workers or truant officers. And there, they have historically always been the most difficult people to get PD for. They're always the ones who need it the most sometimes because they's are very cutting edge, you know, you know, what drugs are being used, you know, how kids are behaving, uh, all kinds of things like that. So, um, the membership of M P Y is, is the way for us to get trainings that we would never ever see. And for us, I mean, it's sixty-three cents a child per year plus five hundred fifty dollars. I mean, I think the bill's six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I mean, I can't send one person to Boston for that much.
Yeah, yes.
So it's, it's a really good deal. Not that I'm biased. Okay, I, uh, uh, Madam Chair, if I may, uh, thank you, Mr. Andrews, for your, uh, kind of like report. Um, six C is the facilities update and I'm gonna spend time talking about, uh, the email I sent you all today. Uh, on October fifth, uh, we had a, um, Health, Safety and Wellness and Security Council meeting. And the chair raised us with her presence, which was nice. Um, and I had taken all of the things that people threw at me that were good ideas for about two and a half weeks and I put them on the list. And, uh, the committee talked about them. That was immediately after the NEMLEC team visited, so I had everything they said. So we had this professional group of people telling me, you know, what we needed. And we also had, um, laypeople like you and me saying, gee, I think it would, this would be a good idea. So we prioritized the, uh, both lists. And so, uh, today I sent the members of that committee and of course you and other people in the town who I think need to know what we're doing, like the town manager and the APW director, uh, an update. And very quickly, the security film contract is set, uh, and we are going to be placing it on all of the windows and doors that were recommended by Sergeant Mornau and the, and, and the person from the company who has obviously walked around hundreds of schools in their career. Uh, we also, um, for those of you who have seen that number change, the twelve thousand dollar number went up because we're, I'm also gonna get a solid three-eighth inch thick storefront glass window for the reception window. Now it has sliding plexiglass, which literally you can just knock right off the track. So it's not gonna move. And then, uh, the additional charge for the security film is they're gonna put security film on that too. So even though it's, it's, they call it window plate glass. You know, if you can see the big windows in the stores, that's that glass, you know, and it bends and it shapes and uh, it doesn't explode, it fractures, and then the film will keep it in place. So that will make that much, uh, the, the glass around our entries much better. Uh, we, we have, uh, we struck gold. Uh, the second most important thing to the. Uh the second most important thing to the the committee members were to improve the video surveillance. System, including having it in real time to the police department, which it was supposed to be when we bought it. Uh on Friday, we had two technicians here, one from our internet provider and one from the uh company that installed the cameras. And they were able to straighten out the entire system, which is now functioning.
Wow, without any cost.
There may be some cost because they were here most of the day, but.
Oh, but but we didn't have to upgrade the system.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, great.
The two biz I got were um twenty-two thousand and thirty-five thousand.
Wow, so we can use the existing.
So we can use the existing system. Uh the representative of the um. Instant alarm is gonna be here tomorrow morning at eleven-thirty to meet with me. Because the NEMLEC team did. Request one more camera. Uh in a spot they said should have a camera, that we don't have one. And we have one camera on this wall looking out at the primary playground that's been roving. So they're gonna, they're gonna check them out and and give me an estimate, so. Um that'll happen uh this week. The bollards, uh I called a local contractor twice. Uh starting the day after that meeting, so it was October sixth, never got a call back. So I'm moving forward, Century Fence, which is the fence company that gave me the quote for the fence along the parking lot. Is gonna be here at nine o'clock tomorrow morning and walk around with me and uh Mr. Andrews and I walked around today to see what we wanted them. So I'll have a um an estimate for the bollards.
For many what bollards for?
Sure, co- uh concrete posts. You know, like the lolly columns that hold up your. In your basement that hold up your fort, those four-inch concrete, they're metal on the outside, concrete on the inside. They have pretty ones. And they bore them into the ground and if somebody loses control of their vehicle. They don't jump the sidewalk and.
So it'll be, yeah, right.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right. Um fencing along the parking lot. If you can picture the field side of our parking lot. Originally, this is the fourth attempt I've had and this one will work because we're gonna put a fence all the way down the parking lot. Four feet high, black cyclone metal fencing. Uh two-inch posts. Down into the asphalt. And that'll go all the way down. When it reaches the end of the parking lot, it will go left to the corner. So kids won't cut the corner and walk down the parking lot. What we're trying to do is prevent children from walking down the middle of the parking lot where cars are backing in and out. Uh and then when it gets to the top of the parking lot, the fence will make a ninety degree and force the kids. Onto that walkway that I painted a few years ago.
The school parking lot or the park parking lot by the by.
School, the Flash Road parking. There have been two near misses there that have been reported to me by uh adults. That they were moving a car or driving by, some a child went by on a uh. A vehicle of some kind, a self-provailed vehicle. So that that will help. Uh it also will. Keep the balls the from flying into the parking lot and rolling down hills, so it's got a couple of good things. So I have a price for that. Uh we're getting a price uh about printing new flip charts. Everybody know what they look like?
Yes, you showed us that last.
Yeah.
Okay. Um radio communication, Chief Burlong, and we want to thank him, already brought a police radio. Our main office now has a police radio in it for instant communication. Uh when we did the test on the panic button, which is uh connected to our electronic system. Uh it took uh two minutes and seventeen seconds for the panic button. What happens is the panic button is pressed. Uh a call goes to the OR and company, they call the police. And the first time we did it, it took two minutes and seventeen seconds, I called them very unhappy. I said, that's crazy, that's not a panic button, that's that's a phone call.
Right.
They found out that they had their software programmed wrong. The second time we did it, it took fifty-eight seconds. Which is.
Moving my attention.
Within a reasonable amount of time. But remember, we got the smart button.
Yeah.
We have nine-one-one and one of the things I did. Every phone has directions for an emergency. And it's in a place where it's not tempting to children.
Yeah.
But the staff know about it. And that's it, it's called nine-one-one. Number one, and then the office. Okay.
No, you don't actually, you understand that, right, you know.
We're still looking at the radios, we uh we're not sure what to do. Uh one of the NEMLEC officers recommended for us to get. Radios that were on a police frequency on a different channel. And I don't think our police department supports that, so it's gonna take a little bit of time. Now, we do have walkie-talkies that work fine.
Yeah.
You know, we, it's not like we're out of communication. Um. And uh actually, this Mr. Andrews brought this to my attention. He he wasn't, he's not satisfied with the way the exterior door locks work. Uh and suffice it to say. When you use a key to open the door from the outside and you then go in and take your key out, it should re-lock automatically. And they don't.
Some of them don't.
Some of them.
Couple.
They they work more like your house lock. You know, when you, when you use the key, it's, then it's off.
Yeah.
So we, we're gonna have a locksmith come in and check all of the doors. Okay? That wasn't on anybody's list because I just, because it was Mr. Andrews' good idea. Um so I told the members of the committee that I'm gonna move forward with signed agreements for the security film, the new reception window and the fencing unless someone objects.
No.
And at this point, we have fifty thousand dollars and the total for those three is twenty-two, two, eighty-three, eighty-five.
Thanks.
So I'll keep working on those other missing items.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't think to make a motion, but I think it's a.
You know, what what will happen is uh since it's a grant.
Yeah.
Uh I will sign the con- the agreement. You will see them as invoices coming out of. Uh I talked to the uh finance director, um Allison, and Allison is gonna set up. A special revolving account for the grant, a grant account. That was really interesting because she smiled and she goes, we don't have any money to spend it anyway. The way it's gonna happen is I'm gonna run a deficit. Because the way the grant ru- works is you have to have the work done. You have to then send them the paid invoices and then they reverse it. So by the end of the year, everything will be COVID-sticking, but initially, we'll be running deficit.
Okay.
Uh the only other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is we had a physical education teacher uh resign, uh and you knew about that last meeting. Uh applications have been sparse. Uh we did have a couple of interviews, um both. We had three interviews. Two of the interviewees have decided the job is not what they want. Whether, you know, when someone sends you an email, you know, I don't, of that nature, I I don't follow up. I don't say why. Uh lots of reasons, I'm sure. So um tomorrow is the tenth day that has been posted, so tomorrow, uh Mr. Andrews will make the recommendation. We do have one individual. Who was already working the job as a substitute. And that's probably the way we're gonna go for the rest of the year. And then repost it in the summer.
I will say my kids really enjoyed PE class last week. Really enjoyed it, so.
Yeah, we've had a great year in fis- physical education and health. I mean. Both of the people we have had since September have been. Very, very good.
And if I can add, Superintendent Parentology, the second, one of the interviews we had, I believe the candidate was um. Surprised by the number of, the amount of work they would have to do to become certified and become a teacher. You know, we had a trainer, um and she was looked wonderful. Uh and she works at the Y and was referred by a colleague. Um but once, I think, learning that she would have to get a master's degree in five years. Uh would have to, you know, take some tests and things like that. I I believe, but we had a wonderful interview with her, so we did have some interviews.
Yep.
So moving on to old business.
I see there's a, there's an other in here and I wonder if that is the the blended learning update.
No.
I think that's either old business.
Okay, seven, seven B.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
We're almost there.
That's okay, that's okay.
I didn't see it yet.
I just saw those other things below it, I was wondering where it was, okay, thank you. Excuse me.
So I'm sorry, can I ask to clarify a question about physed?
Sure.
So this may seem like a silly question, but how does it work if a substitute is taking over, which we're grateful for? Is it, is this person just gonna kind of wing it? Like, or is there some sort of, I curriculum loosely, I mean, I I I mean, I think like, how to, is there support for this person so that. He kind of goes with.
Yeah, uh let me.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that's a really good question.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
No, don't be sorry, it's a really good question.
Cause I know who it is and I think it's going well from what I've heard, but I also think like, that's not an easy thing to jump into when that's not your job.
So let me, let me start the answer and then I'm sure the principal will follow up. I taught that subject for twenty years and I have, since I've been here, I have been a resource for helping physed teachers.
Okay.
And I will continue to be so.
Okay.
However, I'm not here every day therefore.
Right, and um I've already had conversations with the uh our our substitute teacher. Um and if that person is able to commit and is offered the position, I know that they will develop units. Around the standards, I know that they're already looking into the standards, learning about them.
Okay.
Um and interested in taking the assessments that are required for the position. So it, there won't be, I don't believe it'll be a. It won't be a long-term substitute eight-month situation. Um I believe that it will be a fully mapped out. Um and the discussions that we've had so far. Have been really positive around uh the integrity, the importance and what they recognize. They're looking at doing a day of health, a day of uh physed. Um I wonder if that'll be the balance or not, because students generally object to having a fifty-fifty split in that regard. They usually like to have a hundred percent physed and less fif- less health, but we're going to be working the the health curriculum in as well.
Okay.
And um and we're really cognizant of of the the expectations and in what's required, you know, for.
Yeah. Some of that, some of those topics are sent, sensitive topics.
Yeah, absolutely, and we wanna make sure that it's a well-rounded program that meets the state requirements.
Okay.
And um.
Yeah, the health curriculum is taught by the health and physical, physical education teacher in conjunction with our school nurse.
Right, and we have a purchased program, which is great, that'll be a nice support, the health piece is a purchase program. Um which has the content that we wanna make sure we have.
The health um frameworks are also brand new.
This group actually.
For the department, and I took the vote that they did the other day and um. We spoke, at my school, we spoke on behalf of it, um support the department, really good. And it contains a piece about like, um. The not maybe last year, maybe the year before, we talked about um health and sexuality education. And it has like appropriate frameworks about um gender and sexuality, anti-bullying relationships, et cetera. As young as like second, third grade. Um you know, with the requisite appropriateness up to, you know, high school. And um I, I don't usually say things are great. Stink, and I was really uh excited about what they pulled off, so um it'll be great for maybe somebody new to uh join forces with the nurse and look at the new frameworks. And um crosswalk the curriculum that we have and see what else needs. Thanks.
It better be good, they've been working on it for twenty years.
Twenty-three.
Right.
Yeah, 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 it's a um a huge amount of time. I know, the world is completely different.
Yeah.
Um so, yeah, a lot of time, um and, you know, it looks.
Yeah, they've had to restart, you know, start over again several times.
That's right.
That's a world change, the ground.
Sure. Yeah.
Moving on to the superintendent search update. I'm pleased to report that myself included, we have nine committee members.
Wow.
What's your goal?
It's odd number two, that's great.
Yeah.
Yes, so we have room for two, or I don't know, tiebreaker for nine.
So if anyone would like to target that maybe.
Working on it.
I know, we already are. So Kevin, if you would be so kind, let's post it one more time and then JES who's level.
That'd be cool.
That's so great.
Last call.
So we only have one committee member which you on the board.
Current, yeah. And Patty, are, um can you tell us um. Anything about the rundown, like are there any non-JES educators, are there any JES staff?
So there's two JES educators that are one form of, that's retired. Um so we've got three, and then everyone else is from the community.
Oh, wow. And then are any of those folks educators? Do you know?
I don't think so.
Okay. And Danny, are any of those folks from the community, uh parents?
Yeah, we have another educator, yes.
Okay, or any of the parents of kids here?
Um former parents and kids here and parents.
Great, very nice learning.
Yeah, so it's, it's a good.
That's exciting.
It's a good. I'm looking forward. So my next step is to reach out to one, um see what is available. Then I'm gonna reach out to all the committee members so we can have our first. So my question is, could I use the school?
Use your school, that's my favorite. Absolutely, you let me know.
I'm gonna wave the seat.
Seriously.
Whatever you need, Madam Chair, you know, you have to toward me.
Maybe you think that the meeting will be at night based on current.
Okay, yeah, every everyone.
Mostly everyone, except for those that might be retired, have have a.
Okay, yeah, that was um the person that I'm recruiting.
Yes, I wrote, I wrote that person today.
And that person said they wrote you back and um so that's the sticking point, the sad person has in their head that it's in the afternoon and I'm like, it's not the afternoon for work. So um I'm hoping that will work out.
No pressure person, no. No pressure on the person. It's my sense, we're no pressure.
Yeah. Well, I'm putting pressure on the person, so I have, for the early hour, no.
So I would say, talk to that, we can get the ball rolling and I will also talk to Glenn about posting the survey. Um so, yes, as soon as he tells me, we'll be helping with that link. Kevin, I'll probably ask you for some help in terms of posting that link.
Absolutely.
People can start responding.
Whatever you need, come in now.
And you're looking at me like.
Well, a couple of people have asked me. Why they haven't seen anything about the position and I gave a short answer and I. Didn't give it, it's, cause I'm trying to stay completely disinvolved. And I said, well, it hasn't been advertised yet and it will be.
Yeah.
So I just wanted you to know that.
Yes, 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 yes.
And yeah, and I said, I told that to Patty as well. I had somebody ask about the jobs. But we didn't know.
And we'll, as soon as we get the results from the survey, we won't have the survey up very, very much. Then we'll come up with a job description, that'll be the first ask of this search for the week. And then we'll post it. When we're guided to post it. Okay. Off we go and we'll see what files.
Yeah. Exciting, always exciting.
Yes and no, you know, big experience about the whole thing, but happy for you. So moving on to. No, I'm laughing at me about something else. Sorry. Okay. Now that you. So moving on to number B, which is the um.
Madam Chair, as requested at the last meeting, I have put in this document, which I will continue to put into the packet. Um and then we have a uh. An update on blended learning at the Johnson School that with your permission, Madam Chair, I'll defer to Mr. Andrews because he put this together.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Superintendent Parentalzy. Um, first, I did, I would like to start with a question or a comment, I guess, that. Um, we're talking about blended learning and as I spoke with the fourth and fifth grade teachers, I think the objective is to more learn about. How's it going with the fourth and fifth graders? And then talking about the opportunities that they have in the school to work together. Because a- as you're well aware, we moved forward in a different direction last year. We didn't have combined grade levels in a classroom. Um, we are working whenever we can to combine the two grades. Um, and we have times that it's academic, we have times when it's, uh, we have times when it's. Social emotional, which I think is probably most critical and then for these students. And then we also have times when it is during their specialist class. And I want to be clear, is that the objective for tonight's report? Does that sound like a, a good summary of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Of what you're looking for.
Yes, yes.
When I think about blended learning, I'm thinking about, we're not trying to combine grades to teach math together.
No, no.
No.
Just how can we combine all the experiences that they could have in the school, multi-grade?
Yeah, right.
Right, and like, how's that going so far?
Right.
Great, great. So with that, with that lens, let me uh, go through my report and um, share what I found out.
Yeah.
I, I want to thank um, Ms. Cobus, Mr. Lerur, um, Mr. Bullock, Ms. Markno. Um, and for sharing this information with me as well as, as I put it together. Um, first of all, as I mentioned to you prior previously, um, they worked hard to get a common snack time. It sounds small, but. Uh, everyone has a different schedule and so the students have a solid fifteen minutes in Ms. Cobus's room typically. And I think it's going great. Um, that part, they are mixing, they have, they come in, it's. You know, you, you don't have an idea that there are fourth and fifth graders in there. You have an idea that there's a group. And you also see the teachers being able to collaborate and talk informally about things that are coming up. What they notice about the students and just a, a social opportunity to combine with students. So tho- that's going really nicely. Um, you really don't notice that they are two different grade levels. Um, at recess, we see more, we see a similar situation. We have um, genders playing soccer together. Uh, we have fourth and fifth graders playing soccer together. There is some competition between the students in different grade levels. Um, but it is one, four, five soccer game. Um, third graders, because we have almost thirty third graders, they have to have their own soccer games, too many students. I won't let them all play together because they just fight over the ball.
Right.
Um, and I want to get more students up to play in the game. So. Um, so I think that's going well as i- i- in addition. Um, and as I mentioned, there's, you know, there's fourth, fourth and fifth grade girls enjoying in as though, although we have few. Um, and there are fourth and fifth grade boys playing together. Um, reading groups. Another situation where we have an op, this is probably the, the, the one opportunity we have a real crossover, you know, Ms. Lerur, Ms. Cobus have an opportunity to. Meet, discuss reading levels. Uh, because they're different ages and they are at different reading levels, there aren't a lot of opportunities to cross over. Because the fifth graders are reading at a higher level as you'd like them to be than the fourth graders as a whole. However, it's a fluid situation and they can work together and, and they are doing that. And then the teachers also have an opportunity to talk about their reading levels and to get them to do that. Um, during phys ed. Uh, we are having a lot more success than we did last year. If you recall last year, four, five somehow. Had a idea that it was a competition. I'm not sure what happened there, but um, we, you know, we combined them, then we separated them again, I believe. Uh, these are two different groups of students that we're talking about. Um. And Mr. Bullock is also noticing that there happens to be. Fifth graders that are just very skilled and athletically. And this is where it's interesting to hear from him because he's noticing. We have three or four students that in the fifth grade that have such strong skills that he's going to make it less about skills. Because they just dominate. They, the sock, the um, the P E and he wants to make it more of a cooperation. Or a different skill, a different skill set than running quickly or dribbling. Um, and so to make it more open to everybody and more, make it more inclusive. Um, and so I think by doing that and, and he's really mindful about the, you know, making it a successful opportunity for all the students. Uh, and so I think phys ed is going really nicely. Um, music was very interesting because um. He especially wants to separate the fifth graders because. They are best when they are mixed amongst the fourth graders. So it's, they're better off spread out. Um, and not, not, not together. Um, and he's noticing there's some really nice leaders in the fifth grade group. Uh, this is also going into the band lessons and there's some students in the band that are really, um, to be wonderfully, these fourth, fourth graders. Because that, that's another opportunity where if we have a. Certain instrument, we're playing trumpet. It's important five trumpet. You know, it's not. Five trumpet, four trumpet and, and again, good leadership, leadership opportunities and um. And it's really, that, that sounds like it's really a, a gem uh, for the school. Uh, in Veterans Day, this year we're combining three, four and five for the program. In the past, we've had sixth graders do it together by themselves. Um, and I'm really looking forward to seeing how this turns out. He's got about five songs lined up for that. There's also recitation. Uh, the fourth and fifth graders are putting together invitations for the veterans. Um, I'm, I wrote a letter and they're gonna decorate it and post it. Uh, get it out to the, the veterans. So this is a, a combined project, I guess you could say. Um, and then in art class, the students are separate and same in STEM, based on the curriculum and the teacher um, desires. So overall, I think that uh, the students are getting on well. And I think that um, I think that we're making the most of the few opportunities that we have to really combine academically. Um, and more socially. Today at, in lunch, I noticed, you know, we had, we had three, four, five at a table and they were all having fun together. So. Uh, it's really not separated by, by grade. In the past, we had a tradition of the sixth graders having their own sixth grade table because they had gotten up to that point. But I really don't think that makes so much sense because I think it isolates the fifth graders more. Uh, we might do that on sub day because they get subs now as fifth graders. Um, but I don't think they lose anything by not having this special table because then they can only pick. Those seven students, you know, it's really limited. So we still keep it an open um, cafeteria. Which a lot of schools, they end up just separating by grade just to make things simple because you have so many students, but here, you know, we're different. And I think it's working out well for us.
So, Madam Chair, there's two other things I'd like to mention in terms of multi-grade grouping. Our after-school program is ready to start and that those are grades are grouped into um.
Oh, like they're in the span.
Span.
Then three, four, five.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. And um, we uh, this very uh, I think Thursday, I. Di- distributed a uh, the annual M P Y art contest. It's just started. And we had an honorable mention for elementary schools last year and in the past, we've had two winning art um. Posters. Um, I showed you where they were back-to-back years. Went to accusation of fixing, but. I had nothing to do with it. Um. That will be one of the activities that uh, we can find out which students uh, the art teacher and, and Mr. Andrews were just important about this. But that's an activity where uh, multi-grade grouping is perfect because there's a product. And it has nothing to do with what grade you're in. Uh, and if you want to participate, you can and you don't, you don't have to. So. Uh, I'm looking forward to see how that gets organized. Uh, whether it be. Curricular during the regular art class or whether it's co-curricular or a combination. That's gonna be interesting.
Great. Are there any challenges?
Sure, I think that one of the challenges is that, you know, we do have a limited number of fifth graders. I think that's, I think that's just, you know, still, of course, you can't be much about that. Um. And. I think that. Yeah, Ms. Cobus today, I spoke with her and she did mention that, you know, coming out of recess, sometimes there is still the competition. The class-to-class competition and a little bit of the culture competition between the two. Uh, but they don't play five versus four in soccer and like that. Um, so you know, she mentioned that, I think they still want, the fifth graders still want to stand apart. And I think that makes sense. I think, I, I will say one more thing that I encouraged Ms. Cobus to restructure her classroom um, this year. And so she only has the five, she only has the seven desks up front. Uh, you go into the room and it's very intimate. Uh, and so it's not, li- it's last year, we had twenty desks and twenty desks and the students were flipping between classes. And then the, the, the fifth graders would have five students and twenty desks. And so I think that caused things to feel a little bit empty.
Yeah.
Um. A lot bit empty maybe. Um, whereas this, you, I just said, let's just pretend you're at a private school, you know, where there's only seven kids in the school.
Right.
In the class. And it's worked out. I think that has really been wonderful in terms of risk-taking, in terms of. Uh, being able to differentiate and really, you know, get, get close to what you want to do. So. You know, that, that is where you have both sides of the coin. I think where you could have a challenge where there's not a lot of students to be friends with in that grade level. However. If you work it correctly, the students are gonna have an excellent experience and, and that's what I'm seeing. In terms of behavior and, you know, and learning and, and it gets great.
I would imagine also on the, to. It's be more creative for people because they're smaller students.
Oh.
Could get through it faster and actually learn more.
She's got, she's got a solar system that's got, you know, the cerafon balls and all the little uh, toothpicks and painted and. And they're all displayed in the, in the fifth grade classroom where I think that if you had twenty-five of those, you know, it would still work. But that's, that's an example of the creativity that you can really bring into it. They're doing something with constellations right now and it's a whole. You know, watercolor, crayon and then doing stars. So I, I do, I do think that, you know, there's definitely advantages that, and she's taken that into those.
I think one comment, I um. This is a great, this is a great report and a great, uh. I would say first foray into blended learning and how it can be done. Um, because you're hitting the areas that naturally lend themselves. I think to a blended learning model, right? Like music and some of the specials and things like that. Um, and looking at um, like in art and um, STEM. And you know, asking questions of yourself like where it could continue to go, right? Where it might be a little bit more difficult. Um, I'm thinking back to when we were first troubleshooting and trying to solve. The, what are we gonna do with sixth grade last year? And we have a small fifth grade and a small sixth grade. And one of the ideas we did propose, obviously. Um, to parents was the idea of, of fully blending both, right? And not knowing what was gonna happen to teachers at the time. And I think one of the, the to do's and then that conversation is not that well in the past, but we're involved. I think one, it's part of it is that as educators, we should have enough time. To like really think through such a big shift, especially when you take into account four classes, right? Like you're like now. And parents were asking, I think, um, the questions that automatically are gonna come up. If you have frameworks for this grade, frameworks for this grade. How the hell are you gonna make sure that my kid gets all of that? Which we know. Um, that the frame, there's no way to get through all the frameworks for every grade. There are ways that you can think about. A truly combined class and pull out what you think is the most important. For all kids and then differentiate for students um, at various levels, right? Um, and look at them all as individuals. But that takes longer to sort of paint a picture. I do think though, that one of the deliverables that we had. From that time was in the event that the Johnson School has that situation come up again. Where we have two classes where there is a small class size or some other reason that we would combine classes. And we don't have the luxury, like right now, we have a fourth and a fifth grade teacher. Um, that we may not have that luxury, right? Budget-wise. That there is a way that we could do a true blended learning model. Where we combine classes and run through including four classes, right? And there are ways to do that, as we said at the time, right? I remember Tony, you um, doing a couple more at bats, painting that picture. And I do think that I, my understanding is we're gonna spend some of the time this year. Looking at how we could do that. Right? Not to definitely do it, but to have it in our wheelhouse should we need to, knowing that we have. A small fifth grade right now that we need to make a decision about. The sixth grade and the third, sorry, the third and the fourth grades both look. Um, uh, pretty strong, right? So like, I think. The signs look good, especially given that the fourth grade stayed pretty strong as I think there's sixteen of them, right? Um, in the fourth grade, I know. That they stay, you know, they stayed strong. They didn't like, a ton of kids didn't drop off. In the fourth grade. And so, um, while it does look good, I still think it's a good exercise to look at how to. Really make a true blended model that could work with one teacher, a teacher pair with a, with a combined grade level. I thought that's one of the deliverables that we had last year.
Yeah, one of the things, you know, that we really wanted to make sure of was that we didn't end up in this situation again. You know, where we were kind of scrambling to. Come up with a system or more so to have a system that we already do something. So when. You know, a situation like that happens that we say, well, we've already got. You know.
Yeah.
It's been very long since. Although, just making sure that I understand. We're, we're, this isn't also a discussion that there's a thought that we would combine these two classes next year, right? That's not why you're applying?
No, not at all.
That's a difference in the framework.
No. No, I am saying, I'm, I'm more looking down on.
See the trend, totally.
Yeah, that shouldn't we ever need to do this, right?
Yeah.
Um, and then it, we couldn't, like, that, there had been some thought of like. In a tiny school, it makes sense that if you ever had to combine two groups into a math and English class, for example, or a STEM class. That we would, we, some people, and it wouldn't have to be everybody, that some, probably you and others would know how to do this, like. The types of runway that we would need to be able to do that. Right? Or we don't, or we make a decision that we don't want to actually do that. We don't want to blend more than what the, what we are blending right now. Um, and so we would always have to plan for that in the budget. Right? It just was hard last March-ish to be caught upsides and have parents ask us questions. And we couldn't immediately answer. And we don't want to be there again. Even if we don't ever pull that trigger.
Yeah. It's hard to think about with all the classes behind it being so robust.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, like, we don't want to be scrambling and just. Can, I mean, I think regardless of the class sizes, there's just such a diversity and ability level that whenever you can bring them all together. Or m- maybe bring them together and divide in a different way than just by class size, you know, like, sounds like for reading groups. That's, that it just. Gets people used to the idea of combining and it sounds like the older students are. Great mentors, so there's so much to be, uh, you know, gained from that.
Yeah. Just don't want to have a situation again where fourth, like it was hard to have um. Fourth and fifth, last year's fourth and fifth grade or fifth and sixth grade parents say, fourth and fifth grade parents say, um. Well, I don't understand why you could ever do this. Um, you can't, if you need, if, if there's fourth grade frameworks and fifth grade frameworks. Then you can't, there's no way you can do both in a year and there is. And we didn't have a good enough answer for that, right? And while this is good, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily answer that question when you're talking about four subjects. So I want, I just, I want Johnson and Wolden, I, to be able to have that answer. Even if we don't, even if we don't use it, we have to be able to answer that question so that we have that base.
Right, that's who sort of more like, hey, where's the pulse and how it's going so far?
That's what this is, it's been good.
The breakdown was very like, clear, which is really helpful to see.
Yes. Right, um.
It's also more formal. Last year was organically.
I think.
Yeah.
These things happen, this is more formal.
Yeah.
And so it is a great pulse check.
Yeah.
And it, but it wouldn't pass muster if we had that moment again, which we're not going to right now, right? And I know that.
No, but it's the theme from here.
Like, yeah. I think it's just, if we're gonna be thinking about blended learning anyway, let's make sure we have an answer to that question.
So, um, I would say if I'm not, if I wasn't on this committee, I wouldn't know all of this. And it's great and I know that we, you know, are putting it out there, come join. And it's great, and I know that we, you know, are putting it out there, come join our school committee meetings. I'm hopeful that we get, you know, some feedback, but I wonder if there's some ability to update the parents on what's been done because I think and I don't know how, you know, I I would make that you know, to to you on if you wanted to provide an update, but certainly parents have an opinion on what they wish to see happen moving forward and it might be really good to share this.
Propagated.
No, that's, yeah, yeah, this is public, right? So I mean.
Yeah, so I mean, wouldn't, you you could just.
It it's not.
This is public.
This all goes within minutes in the something that you can uh send back.
Yeah, you can request it, right? As opposed to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything on your table is a public document.
Okay.
So.
Cause I know that sometimes we have things that are confidential, so I don't know.
Yes. Yes.
But Gina, she's.
That's why they're, that's why those items are not in the back if they're handed out.
But are you, are you specifically saying like potentially the fifth grade parents would like to?
It would be nice for the fifth grade parents.
Yes, fifth grade parents, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to say, you know, here's its number eight on what was presented the last day meeting and my decision upfront that it should be.
Yeah. Right.
But. Yeah, I I. Make it available like for them to see an update as to like, hey, we're so aware of the changes in work.
This is what's what we've seen so far, sort of.
And and maybe, and I know that there was a discussion about like formally inviting because just timeline wise, we have our meeting in November. We have our meeting in December and then by January we have to decide and you know, we might feel confident making a decision in December. So I know that there was discussion about having a formal invitation because it affects them so much to the parents of the current fifth graders to um listen, but also at the beginning of the meeting to you know, if they were interested in making a public comment, not as a dialogue, but just for information for us to have. So in that conversation, providing, you know, like information might be helpful.
But I guess my counterpoint to that is like I'm just trying to think of like, is that I I I guess, I guess I feel like if they know that we're discussing it and they know we're gonna be making a decision, why do we need to like formally invite them? Like I'm thinking about what other school committees do and I think like, we're a very unique group and I think we're trying our best to do what's best for the kids and for the staff um and for our school, but I also think that we also need to be careful about how to how to approach it because I think like the more we invite um commentary and feedback, we also have to be prepared for
e- e- yes, and I'm not saying we don't want the feedback, we do, but they that I, but I would imagine that the parents know that we're going to be making a decision because this had come up last year.
Do they know we're making a decision by January?
I I don't, but I don't know, but I, but they, it's easily, easy for them to find out.
Yeah, so I think my comment comes from a place that there was felt to be a lack of transparency last year and so maybe I'm overconfident.
Yeah, and and maybe, and that's okay, and and that's okay. I guess I'm just concerned that like like I think we're trying to be very mindful of the clear timeline that we have as a committee and we also want to hear feedback. It has, it's has nothing to do with us saying like, we don't wanna know what people are thinking or feeling. But I also think like
I I think.
We need to be mindful of that too.
I I think it's fair for two things, just to give, you know, the, I mean, the whole like here's the here is our timeline for this and here's what's been discussed, like here's what was brought at the last school committee meeting.
Yeah.
Cause it is public, right? It's not like saying please come, but like here's the information, here's our timeline
Yeah.
that was presented at our last school committee meeting. And and I also think to your point, Leanna, I feel similar, it's not a vote.
No.
You know, like it's not a vote of.
Well, like where we're at.
Oh, it's not going.
I just might have a little bit of that stress from last year where like, let's just be careful what we're asking.
Exactly.
Because I think we we've been ve- it's from my perspective, I think we've been very clear on our intention. I I think we have on our intentions on what we've hoped to do for the, and I'm sorry, my back is too jolly. Like our intentions as to what we're doing for the near future, how we know that this is a short term and long term decision. So I obviously parents know and the community, they know that they can like ask us questions, but then also we will put them in the right direction. I just think like I'm also a little bit concerned that we feel like we're kinda cruising and doing things the way we expect them to go and then things may sort of blow up in our faces. Yeah, and and we're not hiding anything.
Right.
We're just going about the meetings as we normally would.
But I actually think to Gina's point, I I think to give a heads up to the fifth grade parents.
Yeah.
That on on at the next two school committee meetings, cause they might think, well, I don't have to worry about school committee because they didn't start thinking about it until March last year, right?
True. And Gina, they'll be the point of like attacking, like, hey, what's going on? But like, and maybe people are.
I think people are kind of meaning.
I do too. I do too.
That's my answer.
And 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 again, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just also thinking about what we've been through.
Oh, yeah, I do think we should be stricter about the, like, really go over the rules again, like, it's not gonna be, like, if you, it were heads up on the next two meetings, we're gonna be talking about this and then with in the hopes of making decisions.
And I think expectations are good.
If you wanna, you know, hear the, yeah, anyone can come, anyone can give a public comment. It is not a conversation. We're not gonna answer questions.
Yeah.
Um we are gonna listen to all input, right? And discuss it act, it it transparently is for. Yeah, I don't think this, I don't think this.
Are are we trying to say, I'm just like now I'm trying to like be a little bit more direct. Are we trying to say that we hope that Mr. Andrews like sends an update in like the school newsletter? Like what do we mean by?
I think we should send an update to the newsletter. Like not an update, I think we should.
They said that it might be helpful if a message was sent to the fifth grade parent.
To specifically the fifth.
And I talked about asking.
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Andrews did that, okay.
But I don't think we're talking about any. Right?
Right, no.
No, so it's just fifth grade parents, I think, to give them a heads up. I think would be.
If you think that's the smart, if not, and we just continue to put it on the agenda, if people come and come.
What do you think that?
Yeah, what do you think? Well, so I could go over this itself, you know, I, here's my fear. My fear is we make a decision come January and then unhappy parents, because you're not gonna make people happy, everyone happy. They're gonna do what happened last year. You know, like be up in arms, we're set decision, and then we're gonna be right back at where we were last March.
But we won't, we won't be, because once we meet our deadline, that is hard.
Right, right, right.
Good sale.
Right.
We are.
And so we don't wanna be in the eleventh hour having five new meetings.
Yes, yes.
Seeing us feeling.
A family.
Tired.
And that's why I think it could go both ways. And so I think, and I, so I do think that we're, I think what we're trying to do is really get our work done before, by the time January rolls around, we're confident in our dis- in our decision.
Or at least ready to make a decision.
Yes.
But how does the backfire, sorry, to give the parents a heads up?
Say it again.
How does it backfire to give the parents a heads up?
No, no, I don't mean the the.
I think it's special invitation, I think, is what is the concern. Like, I I feel like a special invitation is a concern of mine.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
And I just think like flatly just as, you know, this is the school committee, this is either the next week, this is on the not this timeline.
Yes, yes, and that's what I think, right, yes.
Is on the, that all of this school community, like other people may be.
Maybe they.
That there's.
Yeah.
People have a great support.
Okay, yes.
I think it's very simple, like a flat, here is what we're, our decision points on our on our timeline of decision.
Yeah.
And if you want to have me and good.
That's a good one. Yeah, and and I think.
For the parents, great.
Right, other classes did make comments.
They did. Two of the people that pulled me aside on the stream that were the most vocal, like most like fast. Or we can't, you know, you know, were parents not of.
Right.
Theirs experience, right?
Yeah.
Right, and we saw the action on some of the other, yes, so.
There's so many reports.
So I I agree about sending the fifth grade parents that update. I don't disagree about that. I think we just need to be careful what we then invite the families to do.
I I would think we say the dates of the next school committee meeting with this timeline.
And then we're gonna have about this.
And we're gonna talk at these, the the decision point, these are the these are the this time.
Our discussion.
Meeting and our timeline, our our final decision is January ninth.
Yeah, to the whole school. We we have to, like this is.
Are we committed to the idea that we're gonna have a late January night to make a decision?
I.
Cause I don't know that that would be a message I would want to share.
True.
Feel prepared to make the decision in December.
Right.
True. I agree with that.
So maybe even, right, and I mean, that's right, and we will be right on December twelve, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may, um.
Yes, I I'm just thinking, I'm trying.
Um so I do treat the newsletter as a newspaper and this is news of the Johnson School.
It is. Yes.
So I'd be happy to update the entire school community through uh if if you'd like, uh if if that would be okay with you, I could update folks that we've been having conversations. Um these are the things that the fourth and fifth graders have looked together. Um there's gonna be more information, please see the agendas of the school committee, if you'd like, if if you'd be interested in me writing, writing an article about it. But that's that's.
Yeah.
Do we wanna?
I'm wondering, combine the two topics, I feel like they're almost separate. I think they're separate topics.
Yeah, I almost wonder if it should be like a separate update. Like I always.
You're gonna be writing newsletter?
But like, I don't know that everybody reads it again, that are a problem if they don't, but.
Hasn't.
I think.
I I always think.
It's hard to.
Um.
Or do we just post at the top, where we post where the school committee is, you know, the bullet points and what the agenda items are.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
You know, and then it's up to the parents to make a decision whether or not they wanna. I I do think we should specifically have this timeline for the dates because I find that important. I don't think the, unless the agenda is gonna have
Exactly that, okay.
It's the time.
I I don't like the timeline, I just want like.
Yeah.
Points, you know.
Yeah.
This meeting. Boom.
Yeah. This meeting, boom.
The only concern I have with the timelines is that we might be prepared to make a decision earlier, so then that's put up for December twelve.
Could the bullet be discussion, like for November fourteenth, it would be discussion.
Or the. Potential.
December, discussion, potential decision, January, discussion. Decision will be made if not.
Kind of.
If I don't deadline.
Yeah, if final deadline, yeah. Then they know that someone's gonna have to.
Yeah, I think that would sense.
December in January. But.
Yeah, I know you're right.
I have so much to say.
I I I noticed you.
It's.
I just.
No, it's um. Last year was different because it was involving change. And you know, the old, the old standard statement about change. So my thought process as you were talking is does the school committee envision a change or not? Because that may alter the way you view what you wanna do. It may not, I don't know. But if you, if the school committee's opinion is that everybody who's in this school this year is simply gonna move up a grade next year.
There's nothing to talk about.
So I I I care to disagree with you because I.
At least so.
Both within this school and outside of this school, because of what happened this year. The expectation of many people is that the same thing is gonna happen next year. And actually, for some people, forevermore. So there's a, this is what I'm talking about misinformation and I think what you're saying is very valid is that our decision is, are we once again going to change the structure of the elementary school from what it is? You know, or what what the elementary school is cadence. So.
And there's also a lot of speculation, will this decision mean forevermore?
That's exactly.
Right, and and it's also not true.
And so, yeah, it's not gonna be forevermore.
Well, that's not the decision that we're making right now.
Right.
That's not the decision that we're making right now. So I don't, I don't think that actually one way or the other is necessarily a, I mean, there are some people that assume one way and some people that.
Well, if they we said, hey, if the numbers stay small, we will likely plan on doing the same thing the following year, but we would reevaluate.
Except we wanted. Except we wanted to.
Yes, it wasn't final, but we would likely do it and reevaluate. And so
Right.
whether people wanna take that and say it's gonna be a permanent change or not. I I also think some of our past meetings, we talk, and I don't know where this falls, like in our update as to like how things were going, I think we also wanted to know what the, how the sixth graders were doing, but I realize it's a small number, will we get their input?
We ultimately decided that would be difficult.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sweet, yeah.
That's tough, cause it's a shame, like it would be nice to have that information. I'm not, yeah, and I felt, I knew we talked about the numbers having a problem with like, we can't share, we have to be careful of like um confidentiality. Yeah, right, but I thought we left it as we could ask um as one data point, we could ask um either parents or the school to give us a general, some general themes.
Yeah, I thought that's what we decided too.
So I thought that's where we decided, cause I was.
I don't know if we actually made a decision, we talked about it.
Okay, I did, I did.
We did, we talked about it. I don't know, I don't know where we made it.
But that was sort of my thought as to like, what's the update is on both ends. I also think we weren't up in the name of about um of what happens with this year's fifth grade class. We were not, we were saying we would pick it up.
Yeah.
And we were not definitive about what happens in the future with fifth and sixth grade, right? We haven't made a definitive like we, we have had a lot of conversations in and out of this space individually or with people approaching us. And we're also, it's on our mind a lot, cause we're school committee members, we know that we have to sort of be ample of this decision resting on us, that's gonna, we're gonna have to like figure out at some point. But like if you're, if you're generally just sort of popping your head in and out of this thinking in the hand, I don't think they know that, I don't know that everybody is all on the same page about about where, it feels very vague, all of it, right? And so I think we owe Nahan some definitive, we are doing this, we are not doing this kind of thing, right?
No, I think that exactly, yes, I think we decided that we have too much on our plate this year to make a long term decision.
Right, but even that is a definitive piece of information.
Yes, yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
Share that right now, we're not making a long term decision this year.
Yeah. Okay, right.
We are deciding on the current fifth grade class, we're getting a new superintendent and 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 then.
And so.
That's a fact.
Is that you're not. New decision. Except, except for the fifth grade, except for the fifth, you are gonna make a decision about.
Yeah, the income, which would be this fifth grade, next year's.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, so what's happening?
So I think it would be very thoughtful and our point of view about this, Kevin, is we reach out to the current sixth grade parents and I am against that.
You're clearly am, yeah.
I I thought we're just, I I like the bulleted, like just the bulleted.
The school committee meetings.
No, she's talking about the sixth grader in Swanscott.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and Swanscott. So what, what their experience.
In the interest of time, do you have to decide that today, you do?
I just think that November's meeting and December.
Yeah. One meeting each month.
We want to, we just wanna make it clear that this is gonna be discussed and it's gonna be decided, it's not gonna be decided in March.
Yes. Yeah.
I don't know if that information has been shared with parents and and the act of transparency, I don't want somebody coming in February saying he made this decision and he had no idea what's coming. Like, yes, you can access the school committee agenda, but I don't know that in October, people are thinking about next year, so.
So in service of that, then could we ask Tony to reach out to Jason Pritchman, saying generally speaking, social emotionally, how are our sixth graders doing?
Everyone wonderful is gonna be.
I know.
Yeah.
It it will.
So I, so you know. I'm with that, I would, I would love to get the family's input. I I don't know that it would be like a survey necessarily, I'd be sure, like if you're open and willing to share any feedback, we'd love to know how your child is doing. Again, I don't know if the parents will feel comfortable, but I would love to know that, but.
I would too.
Uh but I don't know, it's tricky, I guess it's tricky. I don't know, I I don't, I still think it's worth asking, I just, I don't know, we'll get anything, but.
In five students.
Yeah.
Five.
Five. Okay.
So.
And then one who had been, been who's no. Okay. So we agree on then putting something in the newsletter to all committees to say that this is on the agenda with.
The bulleted timeline.
So maybe. With December twelfth being a um potential.
Decision.
Decision. Potential.
Decision.
Question and potential decision, January ninth being final.
But, yes.
And what about the. Do you wanna tag it with?
Discussion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Your next steps for me? I'm happy to, are you asking me to put this together and as a draft for you, Madam Chair?
No, we would need much, except for, I don't know what you guys are envisioning, I'm just envisioning at the top of the newsletter where you have the dates of the school committee meeting, just a
Okay.
Bullet point right underneath the. I don't know what you guys are envisioning, I'm just envisioning at the top of the newsletter where you have the dates of the school committee meeting, just a bullet point right underneath the date. You know, we'll be discussing X, you know, we'll be discussing X.
On rising sixth grade class.
And you know what, and so I'm circling my crowd, if. During the meeting, people that have tuned in next time hear, oh, this feedback was received. I'd really like to read that feedback, then we can. You know. They might. That might be an avenue for them to seek it out. Nobody comes to our meetings, nobody knows that this was reviewed. Not nobody, I'm sorry, that sounds sort of. Not that, not many people come to our meetings that would potentially be interested in this topic.
I think a lot of people would be interested in this.
Yes.
That it was currently.
Things.
Yeah.
No, no, I agree, nobody knows it exists, so.
I think we, I think we.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it sounds like you'd like me to put a, put a more detailed listing of the dates based on this. And I can share with you what it looks like, and you can say it sounds good.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, just on the, um, yeah, on the on the header, just, you know, we don't want anything too overly complicated, just.
Sure.
On this day.
Like, like under Johnson School News, when you send out the.
Yes, as I already talked.
From the school committee.
Sure, so like, we would say Tuesday, November fourteenth, school committee meeting seven o'clock at the J E S, and like underneath there.
Yeah.
Maybe, it's that clear.
School committee will be. Having a discussion on the rising sixth grade class, like for November fourteenth, and then you could put December twelfth, January ninth, December twelve. Discussion and potential decision.
Yeah, yeah.
On rising sixth grade class, and January ninth. Final decision to be made by the state or something.
Deadline, deadline.
Yeah, and and to Tony's point, it could be from the school.
From the.
Do you want me, do, would it be helpful if I like wrote that and sent it to you, which I'm just assuming you'll think is okay, and then I can send it to Mr. Andrews, he doesn't have to.
Sure.
Just one less thing that he has to do. But, and do you want, is that helpful?
That, that helpful?
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
I'm gonna.
And then I'll just send it to you before I send it to him. Then it's just one less thing Mr. Andrew has to do.
And maybe the same. Maybe a photograph of that same area of our newsletter could be sent to the parents of the sixth graders in Swamp Scott.
I was thinking that. Of the whole, of the Nahan sixth graders.
Who don't have. Who don't have children here.
I love that.
Just send the same thing.
Right?
Okay.
So that, I mean, it, for potential feedback, for, I mean.
Yeah.
I think that would be great, that's a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, not that they're already not welcome to join anyway, but it's, it.
Right. It'll call it out.
Yes. Okay, and if I'm overstepping, Mr. Andrews, you can tell me, am I overstepping?
You're gonna have to recharge.
Uh, okay, uh, so that, we can do that, cuz that is one less thing for him to bring back.
Okay.
Right, is it, so is everybody cool with, how that sounded?
Yes.
Okay, great. Alright, do you mean this? Okay, that's great.
Alright.
Thank you, I feel like that was, I feel like that was like helpful for us to put out in the air.
Maybe.
Yeah, great, yeah.
Yeah. Then. We're gonna have to start talking about.
Yeah. I actually get to read.
Yeah, and just for, um, for some decision points for next meeting, just the finances again, for. The class per student to go over there and the class per student to stay here.
Yeah, sure.
For the budget.
The.
Stay the same, but we can certainly really.
Right.
Well, what budgetary considerations?
Yeah, budgetary, so that when we discuss it, November fourteenth, we can have the number to reveal.
Basically.
Yeah.
What we're paying Swamp Scott to send students there.
Yeah.
And what that would then translate to for next year.
I can't tell you that.
Why?
Because it's not posted yet, it's not audited. It's gonna be the same number.
It is gonna be the same number, yes.
No.
Our number, right.
Oh, you need just give you the same numbers again, oh.
Yes, exactly.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought you meant to.
No, not reject.
No, I, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We put, we put it some.
Yeah, just go with the.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
About.
To have hundreds of.
For that.
Dollars, yeah.
Something, something, that's, yeah. Right.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, and I think to like the budgetary, um, consideration, like. For teachers, you know, um, to stay, you know, to have another teacher. Or whatever it is that, so, so if we were to have a grade six, what does that mean? Right, because right now we'd be okay if we. But if we add grades back. What does that mean? For the budget. And what, what is the school's plan? Cuz that's, again, one of the things that had come up. Last year.
I apologize for my dishonest saying. By the way, as soon as I get that new audited number, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
Both, both of ours.
So we made the new policy, so we send more attention.
Okay, let's do this.
Madam Chair, before you do, I I may excuse myself from. For a meeting.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I.
I'm.
After the last meeting, I suggested that Mr. Andrews could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
By all means.
I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to your communication.
Okay, thanks so much.
Hey, Madam Chair, so, uh, we have other old business item. Seven C policy B D F A. On school councils, which is a new policy, you reviewed it in your packet, you have exactly what you had last time. Uh, except I wrote by hand first reading October tenth. Now, obviously, uh, we would. Um. Update that. Typing, and I sent you a memo sometime last couple days about where we are in the process. We're trying to do it as we go through them, trying to do the tight actual new policy, put it, put them in a file. And then when everything is done, the blending has to happen, because we're gonna have a hundred and. X number of new policies, and then two hundred and X. Old policies. They have to be put together in an electronic file, already numbered. So that the number of page, the page numbers will be accurate, and then we will, um, create the index.
Yes.
And I will look towards the school committee for guidance on what you want your forward. Or to look like, if you look at it now, it looks like this was done by a. When a school committee that hasn't existed in many years.
I'm sure.
So, you, you know. Okay, alright, so.
Alright, go down the list.
Uh, we need a motion on B D F A.
I have a motion. Yes, I'd like to make a motion on. School councils filed B D F A to be approved at our meeting today, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for B D F A E. For the school improvement plan to be approved on our meeting today, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve file D D funding proposals and applications.
If you want.
We do that, yeah, we're on.
E D. Oh, sorry.
Alright.
C A N.
You didn't want. True. I'd like to make a motion to approve file C H A slash C H C. Development and dissemination of procedures, um, on today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
Uh.
We have to go back.
We have to go back on this.
E.
I'm excited.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve policy E E D H. Couple comments, that's the meeting.
Alright, so.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Now, aren't you?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve file D D funding proposals and applications for today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Wait a second, second. All in favor?
Aye. And on to D E C.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve file D E C federal fund supplement, not supplant, uh, policy for our today's. Meeting October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you keep going?
Keep going.
I'd like to make a motion to approve file D G A authorized signatures for today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion for file D H bonded employees and officers for today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And I'd like to make a motion for the new file of D I fiscal accounting and reporting on today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. And I'd like to make a motion for. Uh, the new file of D I E audits on today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll go.
That was D I E. And then I'd like to make a motion for file D J purchasing to be approved on today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. And I'd like to make a motion for, uh, file D J A purchasing authority to be approved on today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion for file D J E procurement requirements of today's meeting, uh, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion for file D K payment procedures to be approved at today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion for a new file D K C expense reimbursements on today's meeting, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you get everything you need?
Yeah, it was very helpful that she made motion, she excited. I read the names better earlier.
Okay.
That's it, right?
Other than the one, it was my order, I changed the order for two. So the only questions I have, Mr. Panzetti, that the last meeting, there were some things that we had looked at for removal for consideration.
Yes.
So what was, did I miss that part, what are we gonna do now?
We're not doing, going to do those till the very end of. I don't wanna get confused about pushing in, pulling out, I figured if I was always going in one direction.
I heard the part of renumbering, but.
In my office, by the way, if anyone was to see it, I have a big chart. With all the revised ones and all the ones that need to be removed.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll put all the revisions. Into the policy by your vote, then we'll take them all. Out.
Great.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Alright, so moving on to new policies.
Alright, new policies, uh, Madam Chair, uh, eight A policy E E C dash one. I recommend that you do not approve this policy.
No, it's good, you want.
This is a policy, people, now I've been doing my research, I found it from another school district. Uh, it's actually, I'll tell you, it's North Reading, and this. Almost everything in this policy is is covered by law or D E S E requirement.
Hmm.
I find it to be extraneous, and you don't have it in your policy now, and you don't need it.
So if we decide not to take it on, do we have to vote on anything at all?
Nope.
Okay, so we should review it, um, when we review it at the next meeting?
Do we just.
Also.
Johnson and.
Yeah, if you want, sure, well, the. Yeah. Yeah, I'll put it on the list.
So, so this is being suggested as adding a new policy that, well, we don't need this policy, cuz we probably don't have.
That's correct. Yeah, the generally, actually, there's.
This.
There's, there's a comment in one of the policies that we're about to look at.
Yeah, right.
From the attorney of M A S C.
Right.
That says. Um. Typically, M A S C recommends that if something's a matter of law, don't have a policy.
That's.
Okay.
Cuz the.
However, in this particular case, not this one.
Yeah.
But another one, he says, because it's so important. We have this policy. So this would, the E E C would be covered by, um. Since. You know, we have to be a, a member of the line program, we have to follow their procedures. It's totally extraneous, and I didn't know it was extraneous when I put it in until I reviewed it carefully today.
Couldn't we just vote it, vote it down, and get rid of it?
You don't have to get it literally, you can tell me to drop it.
It doesn't even exist, like it doesn't.
It doesn't.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's dropped.
Drop it, yeah.
Right, drop it. Any other policies to drop it?
Yeah, good question.
Okay, drop it. Uh. E F E is a new policy recommended by the attorneys, and this has, um. A civil rights complaint, compliance and enforcement. And in the second and third page, they are not parts of the policy, but I wanted you to see what the reference was. To the template for USDA food and nutrition services complaints can be found. Um. And we don't have this, it, this is really about discrimination, the second paragraph. Is what this is really all about. It's about. The. Nutrition programs can't discriminate. And the attorneys think it's very important.
Okay.
You know, I typically don't argue with them. Uh, by the way, I looked for E E C, the one I didn't recommend in the book, and it's not there, that's why I was comfortable.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Uh, G D A is equal employment opportunity. This is the one that you look at the note on the bottom of the new one. It says, although it's not usually necessary to have a policy, it simply restates existing law, in this case, it's important to reaffirm the school committee's commitment to equal opportunity. So this is the exception. Um. This also has some new language of familial status. I believe is new. Genetic information is new, so the language itself has been cleaned up, and the acts of two thousand twenty-two. Have been added to the citations. Professional staff hiring, G C F. Just catching up, okay. Uh, this one, the citations, uh, this one has a lot more, um. A little bit more detail, the language has been cleaned up a little bit. Uh, I do want to bring to your attention, uh, I have to do more research. But on the second page, it's number nineteen, I have no idea what these numbers refer to, by the way. It says B E S C regulations, I believe it's D E S A.
I was just gonna say that.
But I wanna check. Uh, I've never seen B E S C before, but I mean, you know, I don't know everything. Uh, the citation is updated. And there's a couple of language. Updates. Again, the, uh, the discrimination list is longer. Based on the new laws. And I recommend you give it every consideration. I B. Is academic freedom. And I, this is one we can debate. I don't know why. The. And the, the citations have been dropped. If you look at the legal references on our current one, it says the Constitution and M G L seventy-one-two. And I don't know why, so that's something for me to do between now and then. Then. Kind of backwards. By the way, all of these eventually will have. A date that you decide to put in your policy manual. You see in the upper right-hand corner. On some of the policies, it says. Nahat School Committee Policy Manual, September. What happens is when I print these. It puts that date on it. And I'm so technologically unaware, I have no idea why, so whenever we're ready, you're ready to. Ultimately, you'll vote of a policy. Manual. And so if you could tell me before we do all the printing, what date you want. Do you want it to say two thousand twenty three, do you want it to say two thousand twenty four, do you want it to say two thousand twenty three dash two twenty four? I mean, it's not, it's a little detail, but once we start typing, I don't want you to change your mind. For obvious reasons.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh. Just checking, make sure you got the research then. Policy I C I C A. It's the school year calendar, oh. This one goes into a little bit of the details. Um. Our policy drops the secondary school paragraph. If you note number three isn't in ours because you're not charged to secondary schools. Um. I don't, I haven't found a lot of difference, the May first date is not in the new policy on the first sentence. The school calendar for approval by May first. Uh the new one just says annually. And the rest of the first paragraph is the same. And then it numbers it. The new policy takes the new mass general law, which requires me to recommend a hundred eighty five school days view, that probably wasn't in effect. So my question to you is, do you want me to remove number three in the new policy?
I think so.
Yeah, isn't that.
I do.
I do.
Give me the five.
Okay. I I wouldn't do it without asking, obviously. And I've, of course, I'm gonna take the note off. Policy I D. School day. This is different. Uh the new one takes into account the fact that it's a required topic of collective bargaining. The the current one is, doesn't even mention that. And then the current one states that to help ensure safety, well, children parents will also be notified, the students will not be admitted, blah, blah, blah. That's got nothing to do with policy. So it's not in the new one. That's an administrative detail. It's also a mandatory subject of collective bargaining.
Yes.
Okay? I E is new, no current. The question I have for you is, do you want me to update the fourth paragraph of the new one? And if you do, what do you want me to say?
Oh, gosh.
Up to.
Up to.
Up to, I like that.
Up to.
Kind of speeding show.
I'm good.
And then and then remove the rest.
Yeah, yeah.
I H B special instructional programs and accommodations. Notice the title is different, it's oh no, it's not, this is the, I'm sorry, that was the next one. Uh. This is, the all the language is updated to meet uh all of the current requirements. This is written in a very general way because the specific details of mass general law and I D E A, the federal requirements for special education are hundreds of pages. That's that's sort of what the note says. You know, you can't, you can't provide details in this policy. Policy. I G B. Uh there's a typo on our current policy. The heading on the second paragraph, that is a space I found. Uh the new policy gives specific authority and responsibility to the school principal. And that's that's in the five oh four rate rates. So we need to do this. I G A slash I G D is a new one. And it's about curriculum development. And once again uh I would ask you to consider removing that last.
High school program.
High school programs of studies.
Yeah.
Just remove that parenthetical and leave the rest of the sentence. Its acceptance of these reports
Will constitute.
Will constitute its adoption of the curriculum for official purposes. That's um, just so you know, that's new. School committees used to approve curriculum. Now it's all state mandated, you accept. It's kind of like um the school approval plan used to vote it, now you just accept it. It's the same kind of thing. I H A M health education. This is uh an updating of some of the language. Not most, not much of it. It kind of takes that first global statement off. Good health depends upon continuous life on attention, sign. That's just missing, so the attorney's probably got a problem with it. What I do want you to think about is what you want me to do with the the bolded sentence. Health education will be taught as a separate academic discipline in grades K through six and as a separate class in other grades, I'm assuming a period after the.
Six.
Six, right?
I don't see a bolded sentence.
Eighty one.
Okay?
So in grades A up to six.
Take out as and as a separate?
Yeah.
Uh I H A M A is going to be removed eventually. However, this is what Michelle was talking about last time, however, there's a new I H A M A. So.
This is what's gonna be removed after we voted them?
No.
Oh.
The same, usually when they remove one, it doesn't.
They revise it, yeah.
They revise the letters, this one is the same.
Same letters.
But as you can tell, it's very different.
Yes, totally different.
Totally.
Yep.
And it's about relative to sex education, not about drugs, alcohol and tobacco.
But I just thought.
So.
I won't make any stuff now, but it's.
I I I believe that is a reference to the new health standards, which include that other stuff.
Okay. That makes sense.
You know, I mean, the old, the old uh bylaw is, you know, don't don't have, don't have it in two different places.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh and if you notice, this policy, although it's the same letters, is only about, it's got nothing to do with the teach, it has to do with no blind parents.
Yes, right.
Only.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I H B A. Programs for students with disabilities. Once again, uh this is the one, uh this has a different title with the same letters, this one's student services program. I I I'm not even sure what this note means, district to reflect local configuration. And then I read the paragraph, you know, the the
Yeah.
The sentence has nothing to do with configuration. So.
Maybe they forgot to take out that.
Yeah.
We just take it out?
Yeah, I'm gonna take it out. I H B D. Again. Title one, title one function is huge. This is the one, there was no change other than the references. Indeed.
Speed.
I'm sorry, that's all I could do.
You're sorry, huh? Does it go all the way to Z?
Pardon?
Does it go all the way to Z?
The good news is it goes to L. The better news is L only has one policy.
The it's it's the I's, man.
No, the J's, the J's would kill us.
Okay, so J's. No J's.
I have the system down.
Yeah.
Yes.
I really do. Chris. I wanted you to know how much Chris has helped me because she's amazing. I mean, we are gonna have to spend some money towards the end in terms of the index. Et cetera, but until then, the two of us can take care of it.
Of course. So are there any um, is there any other committee business? No?
Uh any announcements?
No. Not from application to mature.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn today's meeting at nine ninety P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine ninety.
Good night and thank you. Good night.
That niceness. It's amazing. Mr. Ballenhouse.